We have lots of guests this evening, and thank you. When the green light, green light's on, you may speak. You gotta remember that. Okay, there are no, there are no additions to the agenda? Are there any declarations from ex-party contact? Conflicts of interest, bias, whatever?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, go ahead, please.
This is City Councilor David Paddy. Yeah, I'm gonna go ahead and declare conflict of interest on the City Council vacancy candidates. One of these folks who's a candidate is actually married to a cousin of mine, so I'm just gonna abstain from the entire proceeding. Thank you.
Wow, okay. All right, thank you. Any others? Okay. All right, we're gonna jump right into this, this little session of, I've got about six, I think, people that are here this evening that sent in letters wanting to be part of the City Council for a unfilled term. I think it's a two-year term? Know if that's correct, Alyssa?
It is through 2024.
Two-year term, okay. Thank you. So, we'll just get right to that, and I'm just gonna, there's, the way our administrator organized these, they're in alphabetical order. I would've just thrown them together and whatever, but anyway, she does it better. So, Peter Bellis, would you come up to the front and, and tell us a little bit about yourself and, and what you'd, why you'd like to be part of this group? And push that thing down until that green light comes on. Thing I always forget. Go ahead, sir, you've got three-
Looks good.
You've got three minutes, go ahead.
Okay. Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council, my name is Peter Bellis, and I live at 5 Norbald Lane. My wife and I moved here about a year and a half ago from a small ranch we owned. We had seen a house up here that looked really beautiful. We'd been looking in the area for about three years, and once we got here, we just immediately fell in love with the town. The parks, the recreation, businesses, restaurants, but most of all, all the people we met. So when I saw the notice on the website that you were looking for someone, you know, to help out on the City Council for the unfinished term, I thought it would be nice to be of service to our new hometown. Some background on me, my formal training is in engineering, but I spent the last 20 years of my career working at a local community college. I was the dean of economic and workforce development there, and we created programs to assist businesses, schools, and government agencies. Specifically, we made employment programs for businesses, we assisted schools with curriculum development and with grants. We also administered a small business development center and a work source center, all of which contributed to jobs in our community. During the course of my career there, I served on a number of boards and councils, and I listed those, a lot of them, in my interest letter. So I'm pretty familiar with the balancing act that goes on in organizations with land use, the balance between developers and existing residents and neighborhoods, and with the balance between budget and services. I have no preconceived, like, agenda or desire to make specific changes, but I am pretty good at navigating difficult paths. I believe I'd be an asset as you look at land use, services, and looking for a new city manager. In my previous career, I had to do searches and selection for very high-profile specialized positions. I'm knowledgeable in a wide variety of fields. It was something that was required in my position, and I'm really good at coming up to speed quickly on complex objects. I tend to make decisions through logic and reasoning along with compassion. So, I'm retired, I have the time available, and if you think that my experience would be a good fit, I would love to be able to serve the city.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Appreciate that. Casey, Casey Falkner, please. Yep.
Casey Falkner, I live at 810 Sunrise Drive. I had some written remarks ready, and as luck would have it, I left it at work today. So I'm just gonna kinda shoot from the hip. In the letter that I submitted to Mayor Porter, I mentioned that I'm the president of my HOA or village of Sylvan Springs. So the last three years, I've spent learning the trials and tribulations of being in this position. Can't always make everybody happy, and I've learned that sometimes you can't make everybody happy, and you still gotta go ahead with the decision that needs to be made correctly. A lot of people don't get that, I think. Electrical contractor, I have multiple jobs in the Portland area, so I have a lot of different people that work under me, and I've learned how to delegate and, and take the responsibility that needs to be taken to make sure that the decisions are done right, obviously from a money standpoint. I've been through the military, I've played a little professional football, been, been through a lot through life at, at my stage, I think, and this is, to me, another step of kind of a personal thing that I wanna give back to my community and, and help the community grow. I think Staton, I've been here for about six years, but I've worked in Staton all my life. Staton's kinda hitting, in the last 15 years or so, kind of a lull. I hope we can grow the city, and I know that's a large part of, of what you do to make those decisions. And I would love to be a part of that and to help bring more in. Again, I'm sorry, I'm just kinda shooting from the hip. It's, I understand that there's a lot of responsibility, and sometimes it's, it's really tough decisions, and we gotta take our time to, to go through all the details and, and make sure we look at all the point, points of view on every situation. Every situation's different, and to be able to look at that and make those decisions to the best of our ability and to the best of everybody's interest. Again, I'd love to get back, give back to the city. I've been to a lot of these meetings, some of the councilors know me and, and some of the things that I've tried to help with. So, again, it's about all I can think of. Again, I feel so bad, I looked everywhere for my paperwork, like, oh, I left it at work. So, I think that's about all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you, Casey. Appreciate it. Okay, let's see, who's next? Mark Cronquist.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, members of the council and staff. Green light is on.
Green light's on, go ahead.
It is. And I'll just talk masked, I don't know, hopefully protocol. My name is Mark Anders Cronquist, I live at 308 East Water Street, also known as Staton Castle. I moved here in October 2013, I'm a fourth-generation Oregonian and a graduate of Linfield University, which is now college university. First of all, I'm thrilled to see so much response for an appointed vacancy in a council seat. That means that something right is going on, and that's great, great compliment to those of you who are before me. I can recall times when seats went unopposed, and that's awesome. When I first moved to town, I stopped by to visit with our current mayor and retired history teacher, Hank Porter, at his gun shop, which is located on Third with Dawn and the shoe store. While I was there, a tumbleweed blew down that empty street. Hank commented, "Isn't that the perfect metaphor for our town?" I looked at Hank and said, "No, that's not what I want in a town." To which Hank replied, "Well, what are you going to do about it?" Well, October 2013 doesn't seem all that long ago, it was a different time. Vive, my partner at the time, commented that the only businesses downtown were a couple of, quote, "rundown bars," a one-screen theater, a funeral home next to a health food store, across to a gun shop. And she was right. This, that was an inflection point where a lot of more talented people than I looked around and asked, "What can we do to make Staton awesome? What outdated rules are there in the way? What tools can we use to make a collective vision of a more diverse, thriving, small city a success and a reality?" I took up Hank's challenge and have gained vast knowledge of the community during my service on the Parks Advisory Board, as Vice Chair of the Parks Advisory Board, on the Budget Committee, on the Planning Commission, as liaison to the School Board, and as a State and City Councilor. In addition, I do simple things like volunteering to remove the graffiti from Masonic Lodge that seems to pop up every weekend and other buildings, and I apologize for the different colors of white paint. I help maintain the vacant lots, I host young scholars during history walks, pick up endless trash, try to find our history and scan it and preserve it, and try to create the beauty of Staton through photography and share it. I'm also honored to have worked with RDS and other local organizations, and I know in the past it's taken long, heated, and deep discussions and conversations, but I think we can all take pride in what Staton has become. There's only one open-to-lease, rent-by, inhabitable storefront on Third, and we have new homerooms surrounding our schools. The Fleming and Box lots on Second may soon be confined for affordable housing, but live for, live work for the city to go up. Aaron did a fantastic job on the old city hall renovation, looks like Ferenc Raja's going to come to a reality, and tenants are moving in the Dietrich Building. It'd be an honor to be a part of the team kicking the post-COVID era into gear. I did not stand for reelection, as my father was diagnosed his terminal. I chose time to spend time with him. He had a long, productive, happy, and interesting life. But now it's time to, once again, roll up my sleeves and ask how we help, how I may help.
All right. Thank you, Mark. I don't remember that tumbleweed, it probably happened. It's all right.
I thought it was beautiful, Hank.
I think you made that up, but anyway, okay. Let's see, have I got, Jordan Lambert. Mr. Lambert? Is he here this evening?
It doesn't look like he's here. I checked my email and I hadn't heard from him.
Okay, all right. Brian Quigley.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Council. My name is Brian Quigley, 1013 East Virginia Street. You all have my letter of interest, so I won't bore you with that. You can read that on your own and see what my real desire is, but the reason why I came here tonight is to acknowledge a couple things. Number one, as what Mark said, it's great to see how many people come out and really express an interest in serving on council. And for those of us that are not selected in this position, I would encourage you all to really pursue multiple avenues of servicing the city. It's reminiscent for me because in 2000, I sat here before then-Mayor Honeywell in the same capacity that I'm sitting here before you guys tonight and asked to fill a vacant council seat. And at the time, I was passed over, which is fantastic because it gave me another opportunity to serve on the Charter Review Committee, and at that point, that led to all sorts of things for me, as you know. I spent nine years on City Council. Two years ago, I took a step back to focus on my health. I had a personal health issue that I addressed, that's since been rectified, it's been fantastic. So I really believe that there's twofold to this position right now, that you're looking at appointing. Number one is the current need and the experience that I could bring to this position. I had been involved in the previous selection committee for appointing Keith to fill the vacant role when our previous city administrator left, so I'm versed in that. But bigger than that is you have to consider what's gonna happen in two years when you all are up for reelection. I don't know what the intention is of you folks, but you have to remember that we have to pass the torch on to the next round of people that come up, if there is an extra round of people, and it's important to have an institutional base of knowledge and historical base of knowledge to carry that another to council forward, and that's another portion of it that I can contribute to, so. But that, that's what I'm here for, and I appreciate any consideration, and if not, I'm here to serve in any way I can. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Brian. Appreciate that. Okay, and Stephen Sims. Mr. Sims.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Get the green light on. Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. My name's Steve Sims, and I put in the, for the vacant, the letter of interest in for the vacant city of council position, because I feel my background, experience, education, being from this area is a good fit for the job. I grew up between here and Salem and Staton, born here. My family's a Staton family. After my grandmother passed away, I bought her house here in Staton, 2110 East Sandy Am, so I live out there now. I do not plan on moving again, I'm here forever. I moved 12 times in the U.S. Navy with my family, overseas, Italy, Japan, Africa, so I've been all over. Lived on the East Coast for a very long time. I, and also have a commitment for this area, I volunteer at the teen center weekly, I really enjoy that, member of the American Legion. So my background and training, I'm a 30-year Navy veteran, retired Navy commander, just retired, retired five years ago, I moved here from Italy, quite a, quite a big change, but moved here five years ago, it was Thanksgiving Day, so a few days from now. And, you know, during my time in the Navy, I oversaw the best men and women you could ask for, little piece of America, people from all over the place, as, as a commissioned officer. As far as my education, I have a Bachelor's of Science, Chemical Engineering from Oregon State. Got my Beaver colors, they made, they're going to a ballgame. My master's is in public administration from Georgia College, did that while I was on active duty. And as far as leadership training, I was a division officer, I had six months of leadership school to become a division officer, I did six months of leadership school when I became a department head, and then another four months or so when I fleeted up to the XO/CO level in the Navy. I've worked as a ship's engineer, a weapons officer, combat systems officer, operations officer. I was a college professor for four years at South Carolina, and I taught at Oregon State for two years also as a, taught ROTC there. And then, South Carolina, we had a leadership and management curriculum I, I supported there. I think I'm pretty well-rounded on my skill sets, I was a, my designator was surface warfare, kind of the jack-of-all-trades in the Navy, so I had a lot of, a lot of different jobs. Before, you know, before I came here, I was in Italy in a top-secret bunker running combat operations throughout Europe and Africa and, and Eastern Med. And lastly, you know, I'm a team player, you know, you have to be in the business I was in for many years, and I'm retired now, I can give my full effort to this job, and I do not plan on working again, other than volunteer work and hopefully city council work. And I just, my goals are to support the city and the residents here and continue to make this a very livable city for everybody that lives here. I thank you for consideration, and I appreciate the opportunity and your time.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Okay, that's, that's, those, those are the six that I have that were able to be here tonight, so we're gonna take this under consideration, all of these, and try to have a decision by the next council meeting, which would be, what, December 1st, 5th?
I think it's the 6th.
6th?
6th, December 6th.
Okay, all right, so I guess we'll all wait in sort of breathless anticipation and, and see what, what comes out of our deliberations. I guess, is it okay if we call some of these folks back again? Are you folks okay with that, if we do? It stretches things out a little bit, but we can, I guess, if we want to. Well, just more questions, questions and answers. If not, we don't have to, it's all right, we can go with this.
Mr. Mayor, I just had a question on that. Would that then push it into January before we-
It would be, yeah, instead of December.
Okay. We couldn't, like, talk about it during council business or something on what we wanted-
It drags things out.
Whether we wanted to call certain people back for the next meeting and then still make a decision the next meeting?
Yeah, yeah.
Could we do that?
Yeah, something like that. I'm just throwing it out as a possibility for you folks. Okay, so, look, we don't have any public hearings, oh, consent agenda for this evening for November 1st and November 8th. Did you folks have any thoughts on that, or could we get some action on that?
Mr. Mayor.
If you want, under communications from us and toward the end of the meeting, we can think some more about these council appointments. Yes, go ahead, please. Counselor?
I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Okay, I've got a motion to approve the consent agenda as, as presented, is there a second, please?
Mr. Mayor, this is Councilor Patty, seconded.
All right, thank you. Alyssa, would you hold the council on that, please?
Yes. Councilor Patty?
Yes.
Councilor McDonald?
Yes.
Councilor Hook?
Yes.
Councilor Ort?
Yes.
Motion passes four to zero.
All right, thanks. Okay, we don't have any public hearings, I said that, I think, already. Under general business, the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, funding approval for sand filter bed number two project. Yes, excuse me?
I'm sorry, we didn't do public comment.
We're gonna do public comment in the, in the business items.
Well, we have a gen-
Oh, do we have-
We did appointments and then we skipped over public comment and went to consent agenda.
I'm glad you're here, dear, because I would, I tend to always forget that. I don't think it's on purpose, but I do. Are there any public comments for the evening? This would be another chance for anyone to come up, push the green button and tell us what you think for three minutes. Anyone? I like public comment, I just forget to ask for it all the time. Oh, well. Hearing none? Let's go on with this. Susanna? Where'd she go?
I'm here.
Okay, staff report.
She's with us virtually tonight.
On the ARPA.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. This evening, I come to talk to you about the American Rescue Plan Act, or as known, the ARPA funds. The ARPA funds, the city was awarded $1.8 million, and we received our first amount of money in $920,000. Council had a work session to talk about lots of options. When this grant originally came out, its primary focus was on infrastructure and water and sewer plant projects. Our work session, we have a lot more to do with these funds and a lot more planning to look at, but this evening, we're coming before you requesting that the ARPA funds pay to replace sand bed filter number two. It is at a place that it needs to be replaced quickly or soon, and so this evening, we're asking for council's approval for that portion of the funds to be spent on that sand bed. Then, have any questions? Not much, for this is a little short and sweet.
Questions, all right. Thank you, Susanna, at this point. Any public comment on this? On this request?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Just for the record, if people are interested or they want to go back and hear what we talked about, because we talked at length about this last week, so I don't necessarily think we need to spend the time rehashing it all, but we did talk about this, and so I feel confident in my decision tonight, and if you want to go back and watch it, it was last week's meeting during the work session that we talked about this.
And just to add to your note, the city will be looking at other options and a lot of things that we discussed in that and the expansion that the ARPA funds is now added for spending and will be evaluated in that, and will bring another work session when we're ready for the next batch of funds to move forward with. We have a couple years to spend it, so we have time.
Okay. Thanks, Susanna. Is there any other public discussion, or can we go to council discussion? Council discussion on this? And again, as Councilor Ort said, we spent quite a bit of time digging into this, there were some kind of restricted things we could spend this money on, but that sand filter bed was a critical need, and so that's where this first pile of money is going, or part of the pile. Okay. Council discussion? Council decision?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I just wanted to highlight that it's very fortunate that we have these funds that are coming in so that this can take place. I know that we talked at length in, you know, prior years about how this was a need, so I, I feel super comfortable with making this decision personally, and I'm just very grateful for the extra funds that we can actually do this.
Okay, that's right. Yeah, it was, a couple of years ago, we had to dig up a half a million dollars to do the first one of these, and it was, it was tough, it was difficult. Okay, so more discussion, or are you ready to go to a decision on this one?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I'd like to make a motion to direct staff to move forward with the sand filter bed number two project using the American Rescue Plan Act funding.
Mr. Mayor, this is Councilor Patty, I second that motion.
All right. I've got a motion and a second to direct staff to move forward with the sand filter bed number two project using ARPA funding. Is there any more discussion? Alyssa? Hold the council, please.
Councilor Ort?
Yes.
Councilor Patty?
Yes.
Councilor Hook?
Yes.
Councilor McDonald?
Yes.
Motion passes four to zero.
Okay, thank you, folks. Participation, next item is a participation agreement for Housing Rehabilitation Program. Mr. Fleishman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. You may recall that in 2018, the city was the lead applicant for a Community Development Block Grant Housing Rehabilitation Program grant, that at the time that we submitted the application included the cities of Mount Angel, Almsville, Turner, and unincorporated Marion County. We finished that program, closed it out this spring. We were successful in expending all of the funding that was available. We provided grants to low- and moderate-income owners of manufactured homes that were located in parks. We ended up expanding that program to include a number of other cities, and we were left with a waiting list of people who were interested in participating, but the money was all spent. We have the opportunity, again, to participate in a similar program. The city of Silverton has agreed to be the lead applicant, and at this point, it is Silverton, Staton, and I'm forgetting- And at this point, it is Silverton, Staton, and I'm forgetting who the third city is, yes, Hubbard, that will be applying for the funds. And in order for it to go forward, we need the, if you're interested in participating, to authorize entering into a participation agreement with the other two communities to apply for this grant. I've been informed that within the city of Staton, there are four residents on the waiting list. And we have a level of confidence that if we are successful in getting this grant and publicize the availability, there will be more people who come forward. So I'll answer any questions that you have. Otherwise, you've got motions, suggested motions in front of you to participate and authorize the city administrator, city manager to execute the agreement.
Thank you, Dan. Are there any public comment on this? Council discussion, please?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I just have a question for Dan. Are these the, are they still like the $10,000 grants for the stick-built houses? Is this the same?
It is a, it is a different pot of money. This money is, this, this program will be targeted, again, exclusively to the owners of manufactured
Okay, okay.
homes, and they are grants. Separately, the city has money available for low-interest loans to income-qualified homeowners to do housing fix-up. The same income guidelines apply because it's federal income guidelines based on the household size. And, and the loans can be up to, I think, about 20 or $24,000. It is no payment required, no regular repayment required. A lien is placed on the property and payment is due when you sell or refinance. So again, that, that money is, is available to homeowners, but this program that we're asking you to join in on will be just for owners of manufactured housing units who do not own the land that their housing unit sits on. And because they don't own the land, they're not eligible for these loans because you can't place a lien, you know, you can't get a second mortgage on a manufactured home when you don't own the land.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
So, Dan, do we know how much the grants are or how much they're going to be?
The, the grant will be for $400,000.
And then that'll be split up?
That is, right, the, the grant that Silverton will receive will be for $400,000. The individual grants to homeowners can be up to $10,000.
Thank you. I was getting them all mixed up.
Right.
Thanks.
Dan, is, so is this one, I was reading the constraints, are they a little bit different? Because I was reading, it says only persons who can attest to documented financial need due to impact of COVID and households unable to access other payment assistance covering the same time period? So it's a, it's a little bit more?
This, this is money that comes through the federal Housing and Urban Development Department in their Community Development Block Grant Program, but it was part of the federal COVID package of, of the CARES Act and, and its progeny, shall we say. So, so yes, for this program, recipients will need to be able to provide some documentation that they, their income was impacted by the pandemic.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead, Counsel.
Thank you. Dan, does that include something like that they were on unemployment?
Exactly.
Something like that, a termination letter, anything like that?
Reduced hours.
Okay.
Increased costs due to kids not being in school and having greater childcare costs. And so it's not just a lack of income, but financial impact, period.
Wonderful. Thank you for clarifying that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead again.
So, going, thank you. Going back to, no, it's not about this one specifically, but you said that we still have those loans available?
Yes. Yes, we had an article in the city newsletter, maybe now three months ago, two issues ago, reminding people that the, that the housing rehabilitation loan program still has money available.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, yes, Ben.
Just a question for Dan. Other than the constraints listed here, are we establishing any criteria or anything for these applicants? Or are we just kind of a first-come, first-served basis? Are we, you say you've got people lined up already.
It, yeah, it will be first-come, first-served, assuming they are income-qualified and can otherwise meet the requirements of the program. At least that's the way, when, when we were running the program, that's the way it was. There were in, in the program that we just closed out this spring, there were a couple of people that we could not help, unfortunately, because they needed so much help that putting $10,000 into their home would still not bring it up to the minimum standards. So we had to unfortunately deny them. So there may, you know, there may be people in that situation again. But otherwise, there won't be any, any priority based on location or situation or whatever. It really will be, as applications come in, they'll be serviced.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions or thoughts on that? Lots of information there, Dan. Thank you for this evening. Folks ready to go to a decision on this one?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Counselor?
I'd like to make a motion to approve Staton's participation in the C D B G, C V dash two manufactured home rehabilitation program.
Okay.
As presented.
Is there a second, please?
Yes, Counselor Hook, seconds. Thank you.
Okay, a motion and a second then to approve the Staton's participation in the C D B G, C V dash two manufactured home rehabilitation program.
Do I need to say and authorize this city manager pro temp to execute the contract?
City's participation with the cities of Silverton and Hubbard?
Okay, I'll just-
You want to redo it?
I'll redo it.
Okay.
I want to rescind your second.
Number one option would be okay. You go ahead, I'm fine.
Counselor Hook, do you want to rescind your second?
I rescind my second.
Okay. Let me try again. I would like to move to approve the city's participation in the C D B G, C V dash two manufactured home rehabilitation program with the cities of Silverton and Hubbard and authorize the city manager pro temp to execute the participation agreement as presented.
Counselor Hook, seconds.
Do I have a second on that one, please? I did, okay, thanks. A motion then to approve the city's participation in the C D B G, C V dash two manufactured home rehab program with the cities of Silverton and Hubbard and authorize the city manager pro temp to execute the participation agreement as presented. Got, got it. Nailed that one, finally. Anything else? If not, Alyssa, would you poll the council, please?
Sure. Counselor Hook?
Yes.
Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
Counselor Patty?
Yes.
Counselor Ort?
Yes.
Motion passes four to zero.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
That's a good, thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Let's see, the next item is ordinance number 1051, State and Municipal Code Title 12, Chapter 12.08 revisions. Mr. Ludwig, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. It's been a while to be here in person. This evening, I have two pieces of business for you. They're very much related. The first piece of business, though, is ordinance 1051. And ordinance 1051 is specifically related to Chapter 12 of our State and Municipal Code, which, more particular, Chapter 1208, 310, 3E, which states the Public Works Director will provide the city council with a semi-annual report, which lists updates and modifications to the city of, city of Staton's public works design standards and construction specifications during the preceding six months. In 2010, the city adopted a set of documents entitled State and Public Works Design Standards and Construction Specs dash 2010 Edition. This is the way it's read in the current code. In 2015, the Public Works Director, myself and the city engineer, updated those design standards in the public works construction specifications. That was mainly due to our requirements through, with our memo of understanding with the San Diego Water Control District, so we updated the standards. We brought those changes to the city council at that time. However, in our code, it says I'm supposed to do that every six months. And really, this is a housekeeping issue more than anything. In 2020, in October, we started revising our standards again. It's been over a year. Public work staff worked with the city engineer and we updated those standards. As you can see in my presentation, the last time we had it done was 2015. And we updated and it just finished in September of 2021. We don't need to bring these, a document or a report to the city council every six months when we only revise them five, once every five or six years. So really, this is just a housekeeping issue with ordinance 1051. It strikes the requirement that I bring a report to you every six months, illustrating and informing you of, of changes that are not made or that will not be made because there's no need. So you can see in the following two pages, the strikeouts, the strike-throughs of the current 1208, 310E. There's not very many, really. And the new 1208, 310E is following those two pages as well. I will answer any questions you have regarding this, but your options are before you. I believe they are just to approve ordinance 1051 as presented with modifications or take no actions at all.
Thank you, Lance.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Lance, what was the, can you take us back to like, what was the mindset of like doing that every six months? What, you know, can you think of what was it?
Well, that was done in 2010, and the people that were working here at that time, I could not tell you what their mindset was. No, Counselor, I couldn't. I'm going to tell you right up front, it's not good practice to do that. Especially when you're working with a development community. They like to know what they're in for when they come to do work in a city. If you start changing, making changes to your design standards and construction specs every six months, they're going to be confused and it's going to turn them off from even doing work in your city. It's been my experience that every five to eight years is a generally good time to go and look and revise the standards, what you, revise the standards as you see through your experiences in the previous five or six years. That's what we did this year. We found some things through our two subdivisions that we did, you know, over 100 lots. I think we probably developed over 150 lots over the last five, six years. And through that development, things have occurred. We, we, we write those down, we track them, and that's what these changes really reflect. So as far as your question, I couldn't tell you. I wasn't here in 2010.
Sure. So a follow-up question to that, so so just because you bring it forward every six months doesn't mean that you're changing anything, like particularly, right? So if you were doing it every six months?
I would come before you like we are tonight and say I have nothing to present, but I'm supposed to be here because it said so in the municipal code. And what I'm saying is that it's irrelevant. I will bring forward, the way it's written currently, if you read the new section, is that anytime there is a revision, I will bring it forward to you and you will know what that is and the reason for it.
And the changes are something that you and the city engineer do?
Well, it leaves it to me, but I worked with the city engineer and whoever I think at that time is a good, someone to bounce things off of. The city engineer has a lot of engineering consulting experience as well as myself. So we have a pretty good understanding. And through our work with other consultants in the last five and six years, we've gained some thoughts to what hinders them from doing a project or obstacles in their way. And we try to do the best we can to remove those obstacles or move the obstacle or lessen the obstacle for them to get the project done. These changes reflect that.
Thank you.
Okay. At this point, is there any public comment on this item? If not, we can go back to council discussion.
Mr. Mayor, this is Counsel Patty. I'll just say, this seems pretty straightforward to me and eliminates unnecessary work and time spent in council meetings going over things that you have nothing to present for. So this is pretty straightforward. So thank you, Lance, for making that abundantly clear to us in this report.
Okay. Everyone, try to find some action on ordinance number 1051.
Mr. Mayor, this is Counsel Patty. A motion that we approve ordinance 1051 as presented.
Is there a second?
Counselor Hook, seconds.
Okay, thank you. Motion and a second then to approve as presented ordinance number 1051, an ordinance amending and restating the Staton Spec, excuse me, the State and Municipal Code, Chapter 12.08, standard specifications for public works construction. Discussion on that, on that motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I just wanted to say that I feel comfortable voting on this because I know that we can always bring things up as counselors as well, so.
Well, I especially like the idea that the less confusion and turmoil we create in the, in the development community, the better. There's probably enough, as we can hear on the street any day. But, and actually, things are pretty well organized in that department, so. Any other discussion? If not, Alyssa, would you poll the council on that, please?
Sure. Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
Counselor Hook?
Yes.
Counselor Ort?
Yes.
Counselor Patty?
Yes.
Motion passes four to zero.
Okay, thank you. Next one, while you're there, Mr. Ludwig, State and Public Works Design Standards and Construction Specifications Update.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is really the second piece of business and it goes hand in hand with what we just talked about. I'm coming before you to let you know that in September of, or October, I'm sorry, of 2020, we started reviewing the design standards and the construction specifications. We made revisions throughout. There's about, I don't know exactly how many pages. There's probably 1,100 pages of, of, between the design standards and the construction specs. So I didn't forward it to you in electronic copy because it would have taken a long time. But you're more than welcome to come down and see me down at the Public Works Office and I can show you those changes as well as the new design standards. They're, they're much better looking. They're more along the lines of other communities. I'm very proud of that. I'm very proud of what we've done in the last year going through these standards. And I think it represents our city well. But that is really all I have to tell you this evening. This is really my informational memorandum, letting you know that we've revised the design standards. And with that, I'll answer any questions that you have.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
I just have a question. Are those available online? Are those available online at all?
Yes, ma'am, they'll be online tomorrow once, after this concludes, we'll be on there tomorrow putting them on.
Awesome, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
This is Counselor Patty. Is that just on the Public Works page? Okay.
Yeah, Public Works, I believe it's in engineering, will have those, and we have a link to the Portland Stormwater Management Plan because that's what we adopted in 2010 as well for our stormwater. So they're both there. This will have a nice picture of our new standards. I'm, I'm very proud of those. They, they look real nice. But yeah, they'll be there.
Thank you for your time and your staff's time and energy on that. Appreciate it.
Any public comment on that item? Okay. And there's a council discussion. This is, this does not, does not demand any action.
Nope.
But council discussion on this.
I know it's not very exciting, but thank you for hearing me tonight.
Thanks, Lance.
All right. Oh, let's see. Next item is Public Facilities Master Plan Update. Alyssa, would you take us through that, please?
Sure. Good evening, mayor and council. Back in early October, it was a long night, but at the end of that, we had a presentation from Mackenzie, our engineering consultant, consultant firm that is doing our public facilities master plan. And I just wanted to come back. We met with them, followed up after that meeting, just to talk about what the next steps are for this project. And just as a reminder, your city council goals for 2019 to 22 identified a goal of improving and expanding city facilities with the short-term goal of conducting a facility needs assessment and the midterm goals of assessing sites for future city hall and funding options. So when we talked to Mackenzie following that meeting, they agreed to send us over a list of basically phase two next steps for this project. Where do we need to go? We've identified two site, potential sites for a new city hall or, it's not just a city hall, but it's a police department facility. And the next steps are identifying which site is the right site and then taking it a step further of doing renderings of a facility and also getting more public input. And these steps are laid out in here. A couple of them are optional. And as we start getting more information from Mackenzie of what do we need to do? And, you know, what, what can we maybe go without? We'll, we'll see that and be discussing it further. So the estimated cost for the additional work should not exceed $80,000. And that's including if we were to do both of the optional items. The facility's budget had a beginning balance of $680,000 that each of the departments pays into, and expenses of $50,000 were budgeted for the completion of the first phase, which we're just wrapping up now. And so about approximately $15,000 of that amount is about, is expected to be sent, spent, excuse me. We will have to make a budget adjustment, but we will be coming forward with that. I've been working with Susanna. There will be other adjustments that need to be made due to the ARPA funding. And so we'll be coming forward with that in probably early next year anyway. And they, Mackenzie felt that they could get this project, get everything wrapped up. It might be a little tight, but they thought by the end of June, by the end of this fiscal year, to move forward with it. So I just wanted to bring that forward and make sure that you guys knew what our next steps are on this project, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions for Alyssa on this update? Any public comment on this one?
I have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Alyssa, thank you for this. So you're saying the next step of, like, the next phase, phase two? Should not exceed $80,000?
Correct.
And are you saying that we can use ARPA dollars on this?
No, sorry for that confusion, no.
Okay.
So we're gonna have to do a budget adjustment because we, that was unexpected monies, unexpected.
Sure.
But it wasn't included when we originally did the budget.
Okay.
And so we've got to come back with a budget adjustment to include those in the budget, and then at that time, we can make any other necessary adjustments that might need to be made. But no, the ARPA funding will not be used on this and is unrelated.
So we need a budget adjustment for the $80,000, is that what you're saying?
Potentially, it may not be that much. There was $50,000 budgeted for this fiscal year for the project with an expectation of only about $15,000 of that will be spent on phase one.
Okay.
What is the, so after phase two, then what is our next step?
That would be moving forward with, looking into what sort of funding we want to do. Do we want to move forward with this? Is it a bond? Is it, is there grants out there? That'll really get us into a position where we can start moving forward and looking at what are the next steps to get this project off the ground.
And we really can't be looking, we can't really look for those funding sources until we do this next phase?
We really, really need to have a site chosen and get, get some things finalized. You're, you're gonna get the, the idea of what the building could look like. There's gonna, it's gonna narrow down, you know, is it the site here at the community center facility? Is it the site that's downtown? Which one is gonna be best and getting more public input and coming to the council and getting input.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead, Counselor.
Can you, by chance, explain where the, like, did we know when we went out for this that it was gonna for sure cost like an additional $80,000? Like, where did that come from? Like, was this something we had anticipated? We just didn't know how much?
I honestly don't, I don't have a good answer for you on that. So I know that when we went out for the initial request for proposals, it was for essentially phase one of this project, is my understanding. And so when we did the follow-up meeting, Mackenzie explained to us, well, here's what your next steps would be. And it wasn't included in the original needs assessment part of it, phase one is what I'm calling it, just to try to.
Do you know, can you remind me or look up and get back to me maybe of what date that was so I can look up the documents? Because I kind of want to go over them again.
Yeah, yeah, I can definitely look that up. I believe it was, it was right before the pandemic started, that we started the project. And so, yeah, I'd be happy to pull that stuff up and send it out to you guys tomorrow.
Thank you.
Other questions and thoughts on this? Alyssa, when we, we had that first meeting and, and people sent in their preferences on locations and whatnot, did this site, this area, was it a overall best pick, let's say? That's awkward, but. Or was it split between that area on?
I'm getting the thumbs up back there that it was, the survey identified this as the site when we did the survey.
Rather than a downtown site?
Yeah, for the, the people who completed the survey, they chose or recommended this site.
Okay. That's what I remembered.
Counselor Hook? I was looking back, and it looks like October 2019 is when we made the decision to start.
That's a long time ago.
Thank you.
Forever ago.
Okay.
I, I guess, so in my mind, what's, what's rolling around is, do we decide to, I mean, I guess we don't have an action item, so we would have to make that decision when you bring it forward, correct? If we want to move forward with phase two?
As a staff, we were going to, to go ahead and move forward, but if that's something that the council would like to look over further and consider and make it your own decision on that, we're absolutely, something that you can do.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead, Counselor, please.
So just because, you know, we were, we've been in such a, you know, poor financial state because of COVID, I would feel more comfortable if we got a little bit more understanding of how much this is gonna cost going forward for any additional phases. Maybe if staff could look at what they think is necessary and isn't, is there any wiggle room in this phase two negotiation to get it lower? I don't know, just, I'm not sure what the options are or what that looks like, but $80,000 is a lot for phase two.
Yeah, and I, I estimate it high, and I know that by just, just removing a couple of the optional, the two that were listed as optional, it does bring it down substantially. I want to say around 65 instead to just remove a couple of those optional items. And it's definitely things that we can pick and choose. They almost presented it as like an à la carte menu, I guess you could call it. And so, yeah, we could definitely delve into it more if that's what the council would like to see before moving forward.
Yeah, I'd love to hear what the other counselors think, but I, I think that having staff look at it, and they did so well with cutting so many expenses, you know, this last year. I know that some of them will probably be really, you know, important to have in that phase two, but I don't think that a fly-by rendering is necess, a video is necessary or going and looking at facilities. I mean, we could probably go and look at some facilities ourselves that they've put in the packet if we really wanted to, so.
Would the council like maybe Mackenzie to come back with some, some hard numbers on, on what to do to finish?
I know that I wouldn't mind that at all.
Mr. Mayor, this is Counselor Patty. I share Counselor Hook's desire to see kind of what that's, the next steps are gonna look like and cost the city as well, just to understand some of the ambiguity here.
Okay.
Sure. Yeah, not a problem. We can do that.
Okay.
We'll, we'll put it on a future agenda and bring it back. Okay?
Thank you, yeah. Okay, let's see, what's left? Fiscal year 2021, '22, quarter one financial report as of October 31st, 2021. Susanna?
Again, every Mr. Mayor and council, I have a presentation here. Can everyone see my screen? Is that a yes or no?
Yes, we can see it.
Okay, great. This evening, I'm gonna present to you just this first quarter through September 30th of '21, update on just how the first quarter of this fiscal year has gone. I'm gonna talk about the, the report that's in your package and the revenue in quarter one. We'll do some comparison to last year's quarter, see what the COVID effects are happening right now and what we're looking at, looking at the expenditures for quarter one as well as comparing to prior year, and talk about some concerns going forward and ongoing actions. So your report shows you the revenue and shows you the first column is what the revenue was as of June 30th of 2020 against this current fiscal year in the light blue for the revenue as of September 30th of '21. You'll see there's not too much of a change. This fiscal year is starting out pretty much at the same pace that last fiscal year did. The taxes that you're looking at is basically mostly prior year, probably taxes that were collected and probably a little bit of gas tax. So there's not a lot of activity happening just yet in our taxes. When you're looking at the expenses, you'll see that our red light, green light percentages are different now, as I talked last week about our last council meeting about year end, about how it was a different perspective. Now, when we're looking at these, we're now looking for potential line item or buckets that could go over budget, concerns for taking a look at things. So we're 25% of the year spent. So if we're over 28%, that's a red, meaning we should take a look and see why that's a red. This first quarter of any fiscal year is usually not too much distress on these different colors. For example, the mayor and counselors have 50%, but they only really have two line items that they spend, and 50% of that is their memberships, which we pay right off the bat in the beginning of the year. A lot of these funds that you see that are in yellow or red is because of the one-time expenditures come off right at the beginning. A lot of memberships within that first quarter, all of workers' comp for the full entire year is paid in the first quarter, all of the insurances for the entire year is paid in the first quarter. So that slants our percentages a little bit. And if it's in the yellow, it ranges in the 22 to 27%. The access, again, doing the same thing, is that getting close? Do we have anything to be concerned? And then if it's green, it's well under, so that fund isn't moving very quickly in its expenditures for this fiscal year. So, any questions on that part of the report that's in your packet?
Yes, Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, please.
Susanna?
Yeah.
Can you tell us what member, I mean, I, this is off the cuff, so I apologize, but the memberships that were, the council is a part of? Is that like League of Oregon Cities?
Yes, I think that is the one. It's the one that all of you belong to for all the different informations you get and things like that.
Does that include like the women's league?
No, it's only, I have to, I can look, I'm gonna have to stop sharing for a second. I can look really quick because I have it open, I believe.
I was curious if it also included CIS too, or is that separate? Because I know that covers all of us as well, I think.
But that's not like us spending that.
I think there's like, because they're an insurance company.
CIS, the City County Insurance, right?
Yeah.
But that's, is that paid out of that item?
It's all League of Oregon Cities.
Okay.
It's a whole, that's all, you're, it's all League of Oregon, all $6,116 is League of Oregon Cities.
Okay, thank you.
And that's the only membership that I have. The other, rest of your budget is all about training and things like that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, let's do this again. Any other questions? Okay. Any other questions on the expenses part of the report or something? So looking at the expenses from July 1st to June 30th, this is kind of the little pie to let you kind of see how the weight is going. You see that property, that taxes, not just property taxes, are only 3%. That will change drastically here shortly because you will see in November and December, property charts come in, so that will now get mixed with the gas tax, those other things, so that percentage changes. But as of the first part of the fiscal year, our charter service is the biggest revenue that comes in to support the city's needs.
Susanna, can you put it into the presentation mode? It's just a little small on the screen.
Oh, sorry, I thought I put it back.
No, it's okay.
I thought it was a little screen. I thought on my big monitor like I normally am, sorry about that. Is that better?
Yes.
Okay, there's your pie. That's a better pie, a little bigger. So property taxes are the little blue here at 3%. Inter, intergovernmental is the 4%. Those are all the funds that come from, that would be like. Those are all the funds that come from, that would be like ODOT, for example, many of the funds that come from other direct location cities are government here in Oregon, and then the 13% is all the miscellaneous, your interest, franchise fees, things like that are all in that bucket there. So we take a look at the first quarter, last fiscal year to this quarter, you can see there really isn't a lot of change. Our revenues is kind of trucking along about the same pace that it was, tiny bit less, but nothing alarming. So we're just moving nice and slow into government, it's a little bit lower, but we also had some ARBA funds that started to come in and stuff last year, so you can see that it's just about tied, which could be a positive or a negative, but as we go through the next quarter, we'll see. Because we saw that last fiscal year, that it just, it just slowly, and then things picked up in like property taxes, for example, last year. We got a lot of taxes after December, which we generally don't do, and at the last minute, it tilted our percentage to the 95% of the collection rate because of all that last-minute money that came in. So with the revenues coming in about the same pace, I think that we're okay with how we budgeted, and we'll just continue to watch going forward.
Just a quick.
It's nice, nothing alarming.
Susanna, just a quick thought here. Dan, will that thing focus any better?
Oh, is the screen blurry?
Well, it could be my eyes too. Maybe that, maybe that, maybe that's it. Okay. Thank you. Go ahead, Susanna.
Okay, can you see that a little bit better?
A little bit.
And we got additional STC funding coming, so there's still some bigger projects going on. So part of the charge for service coming in higher is this part of the year, we just, I noticed that there was some extra STC funds that wasn't there last fiscal year in the first quarter. So that's good to see, some movement in the city. So here's just the nice picture that kind of shows you the comparison. The, the green is this current year, and this orangey color is last fiscal year. So you can just kind of see the little bit in a visual aspect of the difference between the two years in the first quarter. Like I said, there's nothing really alarming in what's happening here. At this point, I wouldn't be concerned that we're, should have any huge crashes or anything at this point. We're monitoring, but, but at this point, it looks like it's moving about the same pattern. So our utilities were, were a little bit higher than the last prior year for the first quarter, which was nice. Pool is opened, we're slowly seeing membership growing, so that's helping. The ODOT gas for gas tax is coming in about the same rate that it was at last year, so that's nice, that it's come up a little bit and it's staying there. And this is the second year in a row that the ODOT grant hasn't been received in the first quarter, so we haven't seen that yet. So not, and these could still be some effects of COVID for things moving slow, or it could just be the climb out of it. So I left it as a COVID effects because we're still in the middle of the pandemic and still unsure how much things are moving or not moving at this point. So with property taxes, in November, December, so I'll give you a Quarter Two's update, we'll really see what property taxes are doing. And we're, at this point, we're completely uncertain if it's going to have, if COVID is going to have any effect on any of the property or any of our taxes at this point. Any questions on the revenue side? So in our first quarter, we've, we spent about 18% of the budget, so we're a little bit underspending. And you can see from the pie here that capital projects is at 14% of what we've spent so far, so we are moving forward on those, some of those projects, which is nice, because we delayed so many, and it's good that we're moving forward and not delaying them. It's not good to delay our capital projects too much. Salaries are at 50%, and materials and services 36. So that's how much we've done in the citywide expenses as a whole, that's what that looks like. And if we compare that to last year at this time, we're kind of in the same, we're at 17% last year. We are moving forward on filling vacancies, we are moving forward on capital projects to ensure that we stay on top of the assets of the city and keeping everything in good working order. But a lot of funds kind of wait, need to wait for property tax to come in, because they use those funds to ensure their spending. Some projects take a little bit to get up off the ground before they can actually get the spending. So even in past years, we see a lot heavier expenses in the second and third quarter for what we had budgeted and planned. So we will, this will change with next quarter because we are moving forward on these things. But, so that kind of shows you what we, the comparison to last year. Any questions on the expenditure part? So with the pool, we've seen about 20 to 30 patriots starting to attend the aerobics classes right now. We have a few morning and a few evening classes. They're all full about the same rate, so they're all busy, which is super nice. And we're seeing Saturday's attendance of about 20 to 35 kids showing up on Saturday, enjoying the slide and all the extra little fun activities that we have for them to do. So it is nice to see that movement. We are slowly increasing on memberships, but it is still under what it was before COVID at this time, but we're hopeful that continues to grow. I do not think that our limited hours is really affecting people coming because our attendance is slowly growing in those, in that time, but I also know that we've gotten some rentals for the parties and things that are coming up where people are concerned about COVID, so they're just renting it for a private party, so then they don't worry, they're not worried about who's in the pool with them. And we had a party on Saturday and Sunday this last weekend, so it's kind of nice to see that picking up as well. So it'll be interesting to see as the quarters move forward on people's comfortableness and coming back to the pool and what they do. We're still actively hiring so that we can continue to move forward. Our goal is still hopefully to start some swimming lessons in January, we figured to get past the holidays. Right now, the high school, the two high schools and the manorays are at the pool from 3:00 to 7:30 right now, so the whole afternoon on Monday through Friday is all swim team, and they're all actively out there, so that's exciting to see. And they have a few meets scheduled coming out. So it's nice to see that these kids are actively in the water, and just seniors are enjoying their aerobics classes. Any questions on the pool? So ongoing, like I said, we don't, I don't see any real red light crises like we had in '20, or in the beginning of last year, there were so many red flags, we didn't know which way things were going to go. It is nice to see that this quarter is moving kind of at a nice steady pace. So, but we will continue to monitor, we'll continue to watch our expenses, well, I'll continue to keep a close eye on what's happening in the environment around us with the economic situations, and we'll continue to bring to you information as we get it, to stay on top of our budget.
Okay.
Any questions?
Are there questions, folks?
Well, that present, that completes my presentation. Thank you guys for your time on Quarter One's budget update.
Thank you, Susanna.
Yeah.
You're welcome.
Okay, okay. Communication from city staff, anything, Alyssa?
We do not have anything this evening, Mayor, other than I hope everyone has a very happy Thanksgiving, because we will not be back together before then.
Okay. Back to those, back to those interviews from, from me, folks, this evening, I wonder if I could get a, let's, let's try this, a first or second choice by, oh, the end of the week, and see if we can reconcile our differences, if we have any, on, on that appointment. And maybe, I don't know, maybe Alyssa.
So we'll email you?
I'm sorry?
Email you?
Yeah, if that'd work, it's, yeah, and I'll get those town leads to Alyssa. Can we do this by Friday? Would that work? Just a first and second choice, and I'll get them to Alyssa by Monday, and we'll get back to everyone with, how does it, or we can go to another meeting and hash it out, thrash it out. What, what do you folks want to do?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I have a question for Alyssa. Are we able to do that, like, to the mayor, or, or can we write, you know, our, our general, I don't, I don't even, I don't know, can we do that? Because it's a public topic.
I'm thinking.
Yeah.
I was going to suggest if they, if it wanted to be sent to me, I could put together maybe a, a ranking that can be shared. I, I, I get where you're going with it of potentially creating a public meeting.
Yes, exactly.
Of, by.
By going through the mayor.
Yeah.
Okay, so we send it to you, but then he, you send it back to the mayor.
Right, I'm, I'm.
Because the mayor makes the, you make the appointment.
It's got to be a consensus.
Let me have some time to process this, and then I will get you guys the information of how we can proceed with this, and do it the right way without, just, just to make sure we're.
Yeah. I'm thinking that we can do it like with the matrix type thing, if you send that out to the counselors, to have us fill that out per candidate of some kind, and then it can be presented and still put in public document, like in the agenda.
Mm-hmm.
And he can still get it beforehand, I think.
Yeah, I, I'll, I'll get something together of how we can do it and do it the right ways that we don't accidentally cross any lines, and right now, my mind's just not.
It's okay. Thank you, Alyssa.
Processing it, but I will, I'll get, I'll get that to you guys so that we can get that figured out by the, well, as soon as possible.
Thank you.
Yeah.
It'll work, yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
Some great candidates. I wish, almost wish we had a nine-person council and we could fill some seats. Go ahead, you, you've got, you've got the floor, ma'am.
I think Dallas has a nine-person council.
The what?
Dallas.
Yeah, they've got a nine-person council.
They have a nine-person council, don't they?
Yeah.
Um, Mr. Mayor, I have been thinking about Wilderness Park, and it was, I mean, it is like fenced off because of the ice storm and everything, and, but prior to that, we, our agreement with the Saniam Water District was broken, or however that happened, it technically is private property right now. But I wanted to see if we can, and then, but then COVID hit, and then the ice storms, and it just didn't seem like a, you know, really a priority, but I would like to ask the council if you are interested in having, like, city staff, like, open up that discussion with the Saniam Water District again, or whatever we have to do for that.
Counselor Or, um, do they have a new director? Did I see that? Like, this kid, I thought I saw someone's new name come forward, that's in an email.
You might be thinking of the North Saniam Watershed Council. I sent an email out, and they mentioned the Water Control District in the email, but it's a different.
Well, when the Water Control District, though, wanted to pull back that dollar-a-year lease, I know from several conversations with Keith over the past year, he tried to initiate a new, a new agreement, and it just never got off the ground. It just, it just didn't happen. And so, yeah, we could certainly try, try again. I think it's a good idea.
Do I just go to that park often? And, sorry, interrupt you.
Walk down to see the turtles?
It's kind of sad to see that.
Yeah.
All quarter and often, if that's a possibility, to make that like a relationship work, I would be interested if anyone else is.
Mr. Mayor, this is Counselor Patty.
Yes.
I was just kind of curious, can staff offer any guidance as to where we left off with the Water Control District last? Thank you, Lance.
It looks like Lance is, I, my recollection is similar to what the mayor's was, is what I recall. I'll let Lance add whatever he has.
Mr. Lublin?
That is correct. That is correct. I'm sorry, thanks, Dan. You green light guy, you. That is correct, Mr. Mayor, you, you are, you are correct. It was the Saniam Water Control District that initiated the rescinding of the easement that we had over the park. It has been communicated to me via Keith that he reached out several times and asked for them to prepare an agreement for us to review, since they were the ones that rescinded the existing agreement. From what I know, we never did receive one. So it was still in the Water Control District's hands. Now, that doesn't mean, shouldn't reach out at some point and have some discussions, but that's where it stands at this point. I do, I would like to point out that, from what I have gathered with my experiences with Water Control District, it's going to cost much more money, and it's going to come out of the Parks Board, or Parks Fund, because they're going to want us to maintain that entire park. And so I think as council members, you should be ready for that, because that's going to be something that we're going to have to spend Parks dollars on. And I should remind you that we do not have funds in the Parks, we just passed a levy, and, and those dollars are pretty much gone already. So you just be aware of that. So these are considerations for the next budget cycle coming up in April and May, that if we go forward and, and make an arrangement and sign an agreement, that those dollars will probably have to be up to maintain that park.
Mr. Mayor, this is Counselor Patty, if I may. So just to understand what you just stated, so is your anticipation the Water Control District would ask us to maintain the entirety of Wilderness Park for the easement that we want to be able to access there?
Yeah, currently, the way it was, the way it did exist, is that we took care of the paths on both sides. So Bob, my Parks person, would go out and mow the, mow the, the paths to keep all the growth down so people could go out there and actually see what's going on. I believe one of the, the issues that they had was that we weren't maintaining the other areas where there was ivy growing up the trees, and they wanted us to go out and cut the ivy off the trees so they wouldn't kill them. But that wasn't part of the original arrangement. That in itself would cost a lot more money to do, because we don't have the manpower to do it. We have four people in Public Works and one person in Parks, so we'd have to go hire somebody to do that, which costs money, and that is not something that we currently have budgeted. So those are the expenses that if we want to move forward, we need to be able to say yes to when we go to budget talks.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
So I, I talked with Keith a few times about this, and, and also with, I can't remember his name now, I'm so sorry, but the, I think he's the director of, of the watershed, it was probably a year ago. And they, it sounds like it's a relationship that has to be repaired, honestly. It sounds like there's a little bit of, perhaps it would be good for us to reach out at this point, but also... reach out at this point. But also, I think there were other hazards that were popping up in Wilderness Park. If I remember right, there might have been a need for Sharps containers. And so, I think that was also a, a concern of, of the maintenance portion of Wilderness Park as well, if, if I remember right.
Yep, those were issues. Those were issues that weren't communicated to me. The, the issues that were communicated to me were the, the ivy. When we used to have the church group, I forget what the Saturday that we had was, I, I spirit, I serve. We had the church group go out there a few times and cut the ivy out around the trees, but that's a significant job. And though, that was really the only thing that I heard. And, but I don't know if that's the reason why they rescinded the easement or not.
Yeah, I don't know if that's the reason they rescinded it, but.
Well, there could have been extenuating circumstances. Other than that.
Anything else on that? Good point. Anything else there? Other things from council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I want to just say a huge thank you to everyone that put in a letter of interest. I'm extremely impressed by all of the people that put forward a letter. It's definitely a lot more difficult of a decision than I had originally anticipated based on past interest in council positions. So, thank you to the community members. And I hope that you guys heard what Mr. Quigley had said about all the ways that we can all serve the city as well. And although I love all of the people that I work with, there are still also elections coming up for seats this, this coming year.
Okay. Thank you. Others tonight? Other things? If we're done, let's go home. Thank you, folks. Good job tonight. I thought this was going to take a lot of time.